Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board's debate. It's Wednesday, March 26, and from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. tonight, I will be interviewing the three candidates for selectmen. We have sitting Select Board member Joseph McChrisky, we have a former selectman, John Stagnoni, and we have a newcomer, Robert Kirby. I will be giving each candidate two minutes to answer the questions that I provide to them. I hope you enjoy the show. Okay, my first question will go to Bob, and everybody will have the same question. Bob, do you think the town should sell their town-owned properties to increase the tax revenue?
Well, first, I'd like to thank you, Roberta, for having us and SMAC and the Town Hall for allowing us to take this. Oh, let me start again. I realize my mic was off. I want to thank Roberta, SMAC, and the Town Hall for allowing us to have this forum. When it comes to town-owned properties, I think we need to look at them on an individual basis, but in general, I'm in favor of selling off properties when the cost return does not seem to be effective for the taxpayers. Fundamentally, we're carrying dead weight when we're just subsidizing properties that are not fulfilling the town's mission. And I think that too long, the taxpayers have carried an unnecessary burden. We've taken funds from the General Fund to subsidize. Now I realize that we're making each enterprise fund more sufficient to carry themselves, but overall, the taxpayers have far too long had to subsidize ill-conceived and badly managed projects, and this is definitely one of those areas I think we can see a vast improvement on, but we need to manage them each individually. I don't think we can make a blanket assumption about all the properties.
Same question to you, Joe, I'll repeat it because I wasn't. Same question to you, Joe. I wasn't very clear on the question. I mean, didn't articulate it properly. Do you think the town should sell town-owned properties to increase the tax base?
Yes, and I started that back in 2015, when we started eliminating properties that we had that were based on future needs and their availability to make a difference somewhere else. We took a portion of Tosca Drive that a local business was going to move because they didn't have enough parking for their employees. We were able to sell that to the property owner. We put it out to bid. He was the only one to bid, and then he got it and added on to his properties, which kept him in the town, kept the jobs in the town, and kept the taxes in the town. We've done that with Conroy Corporation, I mean, I'm sorry, TL Edwards over in Avon, where there was a small postage stamp in the middle of about five acres of land, and it couldn't be developed because there was a little postage stamp that was right in the middle owned by the town of Stoughton. That took a few years to get done, and it went to town meeting. It was overwhelmingly supported, and that is now into tax-producing property as well. So that should bring in a revenue that could be put on that in the area of $700,000. So yes, I think there's more out there that we can look for. I think there's a couple. There's a property on 138 that I would be interested in as well because it's being used now by the DPW, but we have another yard for the DPW, so I don't know how many yards we need. And the future of our development is going to be on 138 South. There's a lot of properties there that can be changed, so we will, I will, when I'm re-elected, I will start working on that as well for the next year.
Thank you. John, do you? Need me to repeat? Are you good?
I'm good, thank you, Roberta. Yes, I would agree. You know, selling the properties would be the appropriate thing depending on where they are and what the potential use is because it can increase the, one is to bring, it would allow us to bring in revenue, but also it would also put the properties back on the tax rolls, which will take some of the burden off the current property-owned taxes as well. So yeah, I'm in support of, you know, selling any of the town's property that is viable to bring in additional tax revenue.
Thank you. This question will start with Joe. What would you like to accomplish in the next three years?
What would I want to accomplish in the next three years? I'd say what I'm going to do is accomplish three more years of doing what I've been doing for the last three years, and that's delivering results, tangible results, based on our needs, bringing taxes into the town, reaching outside my comfort zone to go out and meet with corporations, meet with business owners, and to try to keep them, get them to keep their business in Stoughton or expand. Just recently, I was successful in working with a guy who had one business in Stoughton, and he stayed in Stoughton. We knew what he was going to be doing, and we were able to help him through the permitting process, and he came to the Select Board. He is now the first company, I believe, in the United States that recycles catalytic converters. So that's creating jobs in Stoughton. It's personal property tax in Stoughton because there was about a $3.5 million machine inside this facility. That's personal property tax. So I'm going to keep doing what I've been doing, is bringing revenue into the town that eases the burden on the taxpayers and money we don't have to pay.
Thank you. John, same question?
Yes, thank you, Roberta. So yeah, so I'm one of the only candidates that outlined eight items that are priorities for me. First is to support some tax relief for the residents and the businesses in town. The current budgets and things, in my opinion, have just ballooned in the last three years. Right now, it's, from FY '23 to '26 has gone up 25 percent, and based on the Finance Committee meeting that I saw, the school department budget actually is increasing, which would bring that up to a 27 percent increase in three years. To me, that's unsustainable, and therefore, that's one of the main reasons I'm running. The others is, I had found a number of properties that were, what I thought were under-assessed. I reported them to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager at the time. Nobody followed up on them and did anything with them. I had to go to the assessors, a friend of mine on the Board of Assessors to get some action, and then when the current Town Manager came in, I brought others to him. One of the properties we found was under-assessed by $25 million, which was $318,250 annually. Not getting a response from any of the Board members, Select Board members, to me is unacceptable. I'd like to implement some tools that we don't utilize currently to spur additional economic development. That's where the economic development person comes into play, which I believe, you know, in my opinion, she's underutilized currently. Work with the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority to get the Urban Renewal Plan done. Some good news on that. It sounds like we found out where it is and things, and it's in the town's hands at the Town Planters, and hopefully that's going to move along now that I brought that to everybody's attention. Oh, sorry, I didn't see the town. I wasn't looking over that way.
Go ahead, Bob.
If I were elected to the Select Board, my first priority would be fiscal responsibility in the sense of getting our town to adhere to budget policies. I think one of the greatest needs for the town is forecasting our capital expenditures over the next several decades, not just two or three years out, but we need to have a long view. We don't have a revenue-town problem as much as a spending problem. I think that we're lopsided. I know everything is touted as looking great on paper by the Town Manager and other staff saying, yeah, we're finally getting our Moody's rating back up and so forth, but it's kind of like looking at the federal budget without taking into account liabilities like Social Security. Like, everything looks good over here, but we're not taking into consideration some of the expenditures that are coming up down the road in an integral way. Every time something comes up, we need to have a Prop 2.5 override, and I want to fix that so that we can start accounting for our expenditures within our budget. Already, we're seeing leaps and bounds happen from year to year in the amount of expenditures that we're putting out from the General Fund. So, for example, the GFOA budgeting guidelines, as dictated by the state, if we adhere to those, we would have a certain percentage of our budget allocated for debt reduction, and that would be key to then taking on the projects that we have in the future, like the new police station or the massive addition that this police station needs. We haven't sorted that out yet, and we also have a middle school coming up down the road. So financial responsibility, public safety, and transparency are top of my list.
Time that right. Question number three starts with John. Your thoughts on the use of Logistic Park new tax revenue that's estimated to be around $4 million a year?
Okay, so as I said, my top priority would be to try to get some tax relief for the residents. One of the things that, you know, people seem to misunderstand what I had proposed, and I sat in front of the Selectmen and trying to get them to do a proclamation to do this, is to use the new growth, if possible, to not have to raise people's property taxes. So basically, and it's not really hard math here, so if we bring in $2.7 million or $4 million in new revenue, is that enough to keep the town operating and that, therefore, we don't have to raise people's property taxes by 2.5 percent? We raised the levy, the 2.5 percent, which means we can raise that much money, but the Select Board does not have to go and actually do the 2.5 percent every year, which they have done. And like I said, you know, my biggest concern is the amount of money they've been spending and have, you know, been recommending to spend and have been approved to spend, and it's basically getting, I think we've mortgaged our future, and that's why the Town Manager is saying next year, 2027, is going to be tough. And when I went to the Select Board budget meetings and asked questions, one of the things that I found concerning was the lack of questions, the lack of backup provided from the Town Manager, and so it's hard to see if we have, if that $4 million is going to come up. And then the other thing is, the incumbent is now saying it's $2.7 million, where the Town Manager said it was $4 to $6 million, and then actually said that it's going to, could be above that. So we're not even sure where the number is because we're getting different information from different areas.
Okay, thank you. Bob, you're next. Same question?
Well, I think that the money that comes from all new growth should be put into the General Fund, and the General Fund should be organized in such a way that it incorporates capital expenditures and debt reduction in the budget. We haven't had financial policies in place that allocate funds for the purposes of debt reduction. I know John, at Town Meeting, put an article for trying to, in essence, earmark some of that money for debt reduction with respect to the South School proposal, which I am a no vote against because I think that project in particular was overdesigned and is going to cost too much. I think we do need a new school to replace the South School, but it needs to be more affordable, but that's for another question. But I think that money should go into the General Fund, and nonetheless, even if it's not earmarked, it can be appropriated for capital expenditures and debt reduction on the whole. And if we have set up our budget accordingly, then we can do that. You don't have to earmark funds. You don't have to do any financial gimmicks. You just set a budget that works based on the forecasting of all revenues and the long-term plan of capital expenditures that you know are up and coming. And that includes a police station, that includes a middle school, and our superintendent has thrown out a number of even $300 million for the middle school. I know this is looked at as 10 years out, but how are you going to face an expenditure like that, even 10 years out, if you aren't planning for it now? And that's part of the problem. Stoughton always kicks the can, but we need to get in front of the problem so that it doesn't catch us behind.
Thanks. Joe?
Yeah, I've been hearing a lot about how we spend our money. I've heard frivolous, out-of-control, irresponsible, and what residents of the town have to realize is the Select Board don't spend money. We request a budget. It goes through Town Meeting. It is duly vetted by the Finance Committee, who are the members of the community, members of Town Meeting, who go through every line item, every detail and every expense. So if anybody wants to change how we do that, that has to be done with the legislative branch being Town Meeting and the Finance Committee. I've heard proposals on diversion of funds to go to someplace. Again, state law prohibits that. You know, one of the opponents has been told that twice by legal counsel, that it's illegal. If we want to do it, it's probably a process to do that. I'm open to something like that if it's done in accordance with the law, not just shooting from the hip and saying, let's do it now. We're changing how we do. We've been commended by Moody's for, and people need to know, for our very conservative budgeting procedures. Now, if Town Meeting and the Finance Committee want to engage in some type of a process that may change that, then that's their responsibility. But the Select Board have done budgets that have been duly vetted. The expenditures are being done in accordance with the process, accordance with the budget. So any way we want to help Town Meeting get educated and work to do something that might be different, that works in another community, I think any sitting member of the Board of Selectmen would be crazy to not listen and try to see the good and if it works for our town. We're seeing right now what budgets are going through in the state, you know, in other towns, that they're looking at massive cuts, you know, because of their needs, and, you know, the cuts, in some cases, are worse than the increase.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, this question will start with Bob. What do you believe is the best use for our town buildings, like the armory, the train station, and even the recreation building?
Well, the train station, I think, should be a community center-type venue, not a private for-profit enterprise. I know there's, some of these ideas have been bandied about, about renting it out and so forth, or having a contract with a private vendor. I don't think that's the way to go. I think that this is a historic part of Stoughton, it has a legacy, it's a good fit for community activities. That could include use of the public for their particular events, for example, you know, a private family event or something to that effect that would have to be, in essence, signed out and so forth. But there's entities within the town that could make use of it for public events, such as the Historical Society and the different leagues in town. There's different events that are relevant to the whole public, and that would be a good place to handle that. So I'm in favor in Stoughton, keeping it under their auspices and allowing the different community groups to utilize it, and even the residents of Stoughton. Whether there's some fee involved with that that helps to offset the cost, that's certainly something that can be looked at, but I'm in favor of non-privatization of that. When it comes to the armory, there's been different ideas over the course of the last couple of decades. I think that keeping it within the means of public safety or public utility is first and foremost, otherwise we sell it off if we can't find a good use for it.
Thanks, Bob. Joe?
Well, Bob, you'll be happy to hear that the Select Board, months ago, did assign the train station to be a community center. I've been the lead, working with the Town Manager on behalf of the town, and we were recently awarded, I don't think, underutilized, Pam McCarthy, our, you know, economic development person, helped us do the wording that we received a $2 million grant that's going to be used for the train station. In my dossier, if you want to call it, that I handed out to the Legislature, Massachusetts and the Senate as well, there were 90 different ideas, and you struck a couple of them, that we can use that building for, whether it comes to senior events. We had book reading for children with seniors, rent a grandparent. There's so many things we can do. Renting it up for wedding events, that you would put up a fee for a cleaning fee in an insurance policy. So that project is very, very well within the works. We've now been doing the testing for what's going to be done at the community center, so we're going to make it. It's a reality. It's going to happen, and we've got the money to get going. CPC has been good. Town Meeting has been good to funding some money down there to keep it up, get the heat up, and protect the infrastructure, as well as roofs and so forth. The armory has got probably five different uses, and as you mentioned, it does under the term of the deed that we have to be used for a public safety purpose. I don't think we'll see anything in the use of a police station or a fire station at this point, but there are other things that we can do, whether it's computer equipment and so forth. But we are moving forward in multiple areas to utilize properties. The armory has been, it's taken on three different lives, a fire station, a police station, a community center, a church, you know, and there's been so many things, but both of those projects are well underway. The Board has been acting on them now for, on one of them for at least three years, you know, being the armory.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thanks. So I'll start with the armory, since that's the last one. Probably, I don't know, probably 10-plus years ago, Stoughton Access Corporation had floated the idea, but it wasn't accepted by that Town Manager at the time, to go in there and renovate the building and use a portion of it, and so, and then the other portion could be used by the town because we only needed about 4,500 square feet. There would have been no cost to the town. The building would have been cleaned up, rehabilitated, and put to use at least a good part of it, and then, like I said, the rest of it could have been used by the Rec Department or others in town. Visiting nurses could have set up shop in there. Like I said, there's just a number of different things. But the last I heard from the Town Manager, they're trying to get Central Dispatch to come here. Holbrook is outgrowing the area, the space even after with their new addition, so if that comes through and is a possibility, that would be a good use for it. As far as the train station goes, I kind of got mixed feelings. There's a lot of things that, you know, has said we can use this station for, is being done in other areas, other buildings within town, but also some of the other ideas would be in competition with the private sector and other businesses in the area, and I'm not sure we want to be competing with the smaller businesses. As far as the Rec Department building goes, that would be interesting to look at if you can find another space for them to go to. It could be a potential to sell and put up for redevelopment purposes as far as whether it's senior housing or sell it to a private developer and let them develop it to a mixed-use project underneath the overlay district, I mean, well, it's by right now, but underneath the mixed-use projects. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Joe, this question starts with you. What is the most important issue excluding a new South School for the town right now?
It's got to be focused on bringing in revenue. We know what our expenses are going to be. You know, we know them for some years down the line, and to meet that challenge, it's bringing in new business. It's working outside our comfort zone and bringing in business like the Logistics Park, which at this time is, because it's under construction, is valued for the tax on roughly $2.7, $2.8 million. When it's fully built with property inside, conveyors, machines, forklifts, you know, offices, computers, that personal property tax and the value of that building increases, which will put it into the $4 million area. Like anything that you've built, if you've ever built a house, you don't pay the full mortgage until the house is built, and it's the same thing here. And I think it's very important for us to keep forward with our financial structure, and if there's improvements that can be made, you know, I'm open as well, but I don't buy into that we're in bad shape and the sky is falling. We have money coming into the town. We're managing our money better. We brought on a financial team that is unmatched in this town. In the past, we had a department head that was actually not doing the books and holding money over from year to year that didn't jive up at the end. So when we have to do, for instance, we have to match and we have to report what we provide to the schools, those forms weren't right, you know, and I don't know which way they were, if we, the schools didn't get what they deserve, but we found out after we came in and with the new financial team and did a comprehensive budget overview, and it showed us things that were troubling. There's one employee that is no longer here as a result of what that audit found. So we're getting the job done. We've got to keep doing that, and that's where I believe the future is, the next couple of years.
Great, thank you. John?
Yeah, so I'll go back to the budget. The budget is actually, you know, one is, economic development is the, definitely got to keep rolling. We need to keep bringing in as much redevelopment as we can in the appropriate places, and that's where the Park Street sewer system, I think, extensions in Phase 2 and Phase 3 are going to play big for us. You know, without that, we're kind of limited to where we can grow because North Stoughton was our last biggest piece up there in that area, I believe. And then going down 138 towards the east is on Septic, so we, you know, to bring sewer down there, I don't even think we have a plan to bring sewer down there yet, because that's where you're going to get your highest and best uses is when you have sewer. We're starting to see that by bringing it into the Campina Industrial Park. We're getting higher and better uses of those properties, and it's bringing in extra revenue. So economic development is definitely, you know, the driver to keep, you know, us going, and unfortunately, like I said, you know, my goal would be is if we can get enough economic development, is to give some tax relief to the residents and the businesses. I totally disagree, and I guess I'm more conservative. I think the spending has been out of control, and I think if you ever go back six years ago, the incumbent was saying the same thing about the Board back then, and he actually took shots at them for going out and doing education to the seniors for tax breaks, and that's what currently they're doing because we're in the same situation. They're spending more than we're taking in, and we're just going to be in trouble, as I said, in 2027. So we need to keep the revenue coming. We need to expand the sewer systems to drive that revenue in, and we also need to set up a task force, in my opinion, to start taking care of the blight in the properties in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
I think chief among our concerns are the long-term financial implications of operating without a budget. Every time something big comes along, whether it's a new school, a police station, a middle school, or whatever infrastructure requirement we have, it threatens the stability and solubility of our budget, and we end up pushing for a Prop 2.5 override, as exemplified by our current circumstance. We need to have a budget in place that is bulletproof in terms of forecasting and integrating those expenditures within the budget. If we don't do that, we're going to be having the same battles, the same arguments, every five, 10 years, whatever it is, and approaching the edge of insolubility, and we'll watch our rating plummet again and come back, and the taxpayers are the ones who are going to suffer. So I think we need to put the taxpayers as the priority. We need to make our decisions and our budgeting with them in mind, and frankly, I don't think there's been enough advocacy for that to date. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having some of the divisive battles that are going on in the town currently. So we could overcome that if we all got on the same page and started to plan long-term forecasting by incorporating the GFOA types of structures that are recommended by the state, because we can't look at our budget in a vacuum and not incorporate these other financial implications. After that, I'm going to transparency. I think we need to improve the relations between the Select Board and SMAC and the other entities in town.
Thank you. John, you're going to start this question. Stoughton, due to the financial, new financial team, has discovered, I'm going to use in air quotes, $12.7 million in new free cash for this upcoming year. What do you think is the best use for this money?
Well, it's, $12.7 million in free cash comes back to what was mentioned earlier. I don't have the breakdown of how much of it came from old articles that were not closed out, and therefore, if, depending on what the uses were, they only, might only be able to use them for those type of things. So if it was used at a school to, you know, replace windows or something, we might only be able to use them for those. So without knowing all the details of that, because I only heard about the number, but there's, there's obviously... there's obviously a number of things we need to do. We need a new ladder truck. I think they're doing the right thing. It's trying to put that to the side and pay cash for that down the road. Increasing the stabilization account is a wise thing to do. Trying to put some towards the south school or whatever comes from the building, the building stabilization account would be, is helpful. You know, I'm concerned about the $2 million that they, you know, recently said they were going to put towards a school. You know, people, you know, to me, that just is a shell game, because that's borrowed money from the high school, and we're just going to earmark it for another school. So I think they're just doing a shell game. But yeah, it's, like I said, I haven't seen all the things, but we need to be wise about it and then try to save some of it and look at the future. Hopefully, we don't end up spending it, you know, on the budget.
Great. Thank you. Bob?
I think this is an example of one of the things that the current leadership has done well, and I would like to commend the accounting staff. They employed forensic accounting techniques to kind of uncover this money, and that's a bonus to the taxpayers. So thank you for that. I think that as far as this money goes, we should be putting the stabilization fund at the top of the list in the ways we appropriate this money, because far too long, anything that's ended up in free cash has just been a free-for-all in terms of who can get their budget request in fast enough to appropriate that money. And we need to end that system. We need to have a budget. We have to have real benchmarks that each enterprise, each area of our town government and services can operate within. We've seen this happen in other communities. I was just reading an article about the city of Newton and how their school was having to make hard choices because their bylaws in their town required that the town operate on a balanced budget every year, and the school was asking for several million dollars more than they could get from the appropriations. We'll be facing the same situation here in Stoughton in short order if we do not have the proper forecasting and budgeting principles in place, and it's just a free-for-all. We need to have our stabilization fund actually stable and have that reserved for one expenditures that are imminent, like a broken-down fire vehicle, or we need a new ladder truck imminently.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, and we've talked about this. The town manager has been very clear on the use of stabilization accounts, and this money to be used for proactive ways to keep up eliminating these last-minute things. You know, it's not a shuffle, and I do want to respond to Mr. Stagnone when he said that I took shots at two of his friends that were on the Board of Selectment at the time. And I didn't take shots. I clearly described the fact that when they were doing what I called their dog and pony show, they were telling the seniors of the town all these different programs they could get, but they didn't bring anybody with them to tell them where that is and how to get it and who will help you. And that's what we're doing now. We're not doing what was done before, because it was wrong. And to refer to it, you know, as the shell game, that's what they were doing to the seniors of our town, because they didn't provide them resources to go and get that aid. We're doing that now.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next question, we'll start with Bob. How will you react if the state cuts funding to the town of Stoughton?
Well, do you have more specifics about which funding?
Yeah, I guess keeping the same services within the budget that we have.
Well, if any of our funding goes away from the state or federal level, we have to take inventory of where we're at and make adjustments accordingly. I know people are concerned, for example, with the revisions to the Department of Education vis-à-vis the Trump administration, that maybe funding for education might be in jeopardy. Well, that's already been an issue at the state level inasmuch as the state is operating at a deficit in many regards now. So we've kind of built an infrastructure in the school community that's expanded when we were given grant money because of COVID and circumstances that were beyond our control. And as that funding receives, we have then to carry the burden of all this enhanced infrastructure and somehow subsidize those efforts. So I think we have to rethink it, and sometimes we might have to pull back, and that might mean some jobs will be consolidated within different departments. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. Perhaps there's other ways. I know this town manager and this current administration has worked hard to try to consolidate jobs and so forth, but there could be more of that coming. If things are out of our control and our budget is not balanced, we are going to have to take those measures, and nobody wants to see anybody lose their job. So I think that if we are proactive, make a solid budget, we can preempt that crisis.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I think we could be very far ahead of that if we could learn to bring people together through the town meeting process, through budget hearings, through the finance committee, and agree that we don't agree on everything. But the way that our meetings, town meeting included, have been going are a disgrace to town meeting and what it stands for. I mean, we're yelling matches, people that won't, you know, listen to rule of order, they just keep talking. It just needs to change. And I've been on the board, I will talk with anyone, and I've said this over and over, I will meet with anyone, anywhere. I may not agree with you on the issues, and there are some people that I don't agree with them on their issues at all, but I believe they're good people and they want the same things that we all want. It's our town. Town meeting has to change. Town meeting is not being run correctly. It's confusing for a lot of people. And the first time that I could say that goes back to well before Howard Hansen as our moderator, our deputy moderator, Kamel Drewes, ran the best meeting I have ever seen at town meeting in years. It was efficient, it moved forward, people had the opportunity to speak, and the tempers were down a little bit more. And that is what needs to happen. We've got to bring a little bit of civility back to this and agree that we don't agree. You know, a lot of people have a lot of different views, but when it comes to our town, the place we live in, and we're going to see our kids at baseball, or in my case, grandchildren, you know, at events, we've got to be able to say to another person, hello, how are you? The backstabbing, the political maneuvering, the misinformation needs to end, and people have got to realize this is our town. It's our Stoughton, and we should be able to talk. And I challenge the people out there, do your part, step up, try to make a difference. If somebody disagrees with you, and believe me, I have a lot of people that disagree with me, but I understand and I respect their position, and I respect what they stand for. But we've got to be able to come together, do the job the right way, and represent all of Stoughton.
Oh, you didn't hear. Okay. You didn't hear. Okay, John?
Yeah, it was great, because one, you didn't answer the question. So if the state funding is reduced, goes back to my original thing, you know, so when I went to the Select Board raising my concerns and making suggestions on cuts and to start considering some cutting the budgets this year, again, based on the town manager saying FY '27 is going to be looking pretty tough, now's the time. Don't wait until FY '27 is here. We should be looking at making cuts today and seeing where we can save. Again, you know, I don't know how many people out there, you know, the residents got a 27% pay increase in the last three years. You know, I know I certainly haven't, my wife certainly hasn't, and nobody in my family has. So I think we're, again, we've mortgaged the future. It's going to be tough, and if the state funding does get reduced, because we don't have any wiggle room based on what the Select Board is recommending for a budget, that we had like $4,000 extra to deal with, and then now the school department just hit us with another $2 to $3 million recently, and I'm not sure if all that money is coming from somewhere else or if there's going to have to be cuts. So it'll be interesting to see that going. But yeah, if any Fed or state funding gets reduced, we're going to be cutting into the budgets. There's no way, because like I said, the budget, there's only, was $4,000 left over, and, you know, they've been eating it up over the last three years with these large increases.
Thank you. Next question starts with Joe. Do you believe in term limits for appointed positions? And also, what would you be looking for when you appoint a candidate?
Okay, well, I do want to respond first to John's comment about how he comes to the Select Board and nobody listens and doesn't do anything. Unfortunately, John comes up on his citizens' comments with an issue that is more than just a two-minute conversation. It should be vetted through the financial end and the town manager, and then have it put on the agenda, and we could talk about it. But just coming up before the Selectment at the beginning of each meeting and putting your two cents in and expecting, you know, there to be a big answer within two days just isn't going to happen. I've always believed in term limits, to a point. I can argue against them, and I know that term limits, we have them. They're called elections. Unfortunately, people aren't voting anymore, and they're not taking it. So by keeping, by putting in term limits, you're actually keeping the residents away from electing who they want. So it's a two-sided issue, but times are changing. So it just comes down to what we can get done when we work together. These are all issues, I think, that are out there, that are not far off, but we're failing. We're failing as every area of government to not be able to work together, and then people just throwing it on the people that are sitting up here at the Select Board. I mean, which is, you take it, that's part of what you are, but people have got to realize what the Select Board is. They're policymakers. They don't have ultimate authority. The legislative branch has that authority. So let's change that, let's make it work better where it can work better, and maybe that's going to get us all to the middle of the table and understand how we can move this town forward and meet the challenges ahead, because they're out there. They're out there. And we are doing, and I will always say how I have been very proud to be able to bring new revenue into this town unlike anybody has ever done.
Thank you. I just want to repeat the question. Do you believe in term limits for appointed positions? And what would you be looking for when you appoint a candidate? Bob?
Yes, I believe in term limits across the board. I think that fundamentally, we need diversity of ideas and talents, and I understand that an election is a type of term limit. However, we put it on the highest office in our land, we put it in other places, we even have it in the smallest positions in many cases. So I think that it's just a good practice in general, because people get too comfortable, people get too married to the, I don't know, the status, the power that goes along with many jobs or whatever. And so I think that the idea of a term limit just makes a person to go in, do their duty for a time, and then someone else takes it. I just think, idealistically, it's the best way to go, so I'm in favor of it across the board in every capacity.
Yeah, so I got mixed feelings on this one, because one is, you know, term limits do have some purposes, and then others say, you know, will say, hey, you know, the elections is the way to, you know, appointments, because most of the board committees are in town that are, they're appointed either by the Selectment or the town manager. So it's, I think, at the end of the day, I probably support term limits, because I think it's good to have other people get involved. So what I would look for is people, you know, depending on what the committee is and/or board is, is their background to make sure, to see if it lines up with the board or position that they're looking to apply for. So if you, you know, if you're going to go for the zoning board, maybe you have some, you know, some legal background on zoning and have some experience in it. If you're on the planning board, you have economic development experience and being able to read plans and things like that. So, and then, you know, even for the elected ones, I would think that term limits might be helpful. You know, too many times we hear things are getting kicked down the road, and now we're all paying for it. Sometimes when, you know, one could look at it and say the people that have been on the boards the longest may be the problem as well. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we have some time, so I'm going to go with this one, and I think I messed up the order, so I'm going to start with John on this one. Your thought on new growth in Stoughton?
Yeah, like I said, you know, one is, you know, for the health of the town, you need to keep growing, so we always need new revenue. Stoughton is fortunately, you know, not that far outside of Boston. We have a lot of, you know, we're right near Route 128 and 24, and we have the commuter rail. So, you know, there's a lot of places we can take advantage of for new development, and as I mentioned earlier, the Park Street Sewer is, I think, is a big place that, you know, could have a great impact for the town for additional revenue and commercial, I mean, add to our commercial base. So that's pretty much it.
Beautiful. Bob?
I think with respect to new growth, having additional revenue from the industrial zones will be key to our future. However, I do have a concern with something that I've talked about throughout my campaign, which is urbanization. And that's when we start putting structures within communities that are kind of asynchronous with that particular community. For example, last year, we had the Hebrew Life proposal, which had this six-story structure, which looked like it belonged in the city of Dorchester, proposed right on Canton Street down in a very rural part of the town, just residential. There are some businesses along there, but nonetheless, it's by character a more residential rural-type environment, and this building was not in character. And I think the absence of kind of pushback from the leadership level in the town exemplifies why there needs to be advocacy for the appropriateness of these structures and these businesses and different things within certain environments. Sometimes they cross over, and we can see the complexion of our city, our town, become a city before we've even realized what's happened by not taking the appropriate steps to ensure that the taxpayers, the residents, are the first priority in all the decisions about how businesses are licensed and located and so forth. Fortunately, we had a coalition that raised a lot of concerns and questions when that proposal was brought to the Select Board, and they revised it before it went to town meeting, so that what was actually voted on was a little more appropriate and a little more in keeping with what we were trying to accomplish for that environment.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, we're on our way with new growth. We're doing very good with new growth, and we look to our neighboring community of the town of Easton, and Douglas King Builders has such a relationship with the town of Easton, building beautiful facilities, livable communities, affordable, that have a high yield on investment to the town. It promotes business, they're in areas where there's little shops and restaurants, so they feed from that. We have a developer in town that we can do work with on housing. We have developers that want to come in and do more with us, and we had to shed that image of the past, that when people went before town boards and commissions, they had guns held to their head. They were asked to buy fire trucks before they could get a permit. You know, those days are gone, and that's how we were able to bring somebody like Brookfield Properties in. And in their video, they state, you know, the two vice presidents state that this is the best private partnership with a community that they've had. This is a company that has $7 trillion in real estate all over the world. They picked Stoughton. They didn't just throw a pin on a map and say, I'm going to try it. There was multiple meetings that we had, we worked with them, we told them what the neighborhood looked for. They wanted to have their truck traffic enter and exit on Turnpike Street. That was a non-player, because we're going to protect our neighborhoods. This was a plan that worked. It's worked here, it worked with Milton- here. It worked with Milton Cat. It worked on Tosca Drive. We are on our way with new growth. We have a good relationship. We're doing those things that everybody wants to see done. And this, we're seeing the fruits of the labor now. So, what we've got to do, again, is work as one community. You know, yes, we're made up of a lot of voices, but we have to work as a team. And to be able to foster more of that, we need to get more out into the Boston metro area, find out who's moving, to show them where we can house them, and build a partnership there. So, we're getting it done, and new growth has never been better than where it is now.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to sneak in one more question before your final. So, if we can keep it to a minute, this will be great. Do you think that the town should tax less than the 2.5% for any other year coming up?
Does this go to me first?
Um, yes.
So, I think the question is, if we're dealing with excess capacity, basically, if we have a kind of automatic 2.5% increase from year to year given to our general fund, can we have an underwrite? Can we actually pull that back and kind of reset and give the taxpayers a break? Absolutely, I would advocate for that 100%. I think that it's always just assumed that we have to spend the maximum that we take in, like, revenue is going to be here, so we've just got to spend it. There's not enough thought to giving the taxpayers a break. I think that so many of our seniors that are on a fixed income in this town struggle to make their monthly expenditures. So, yes, we should be trying to think about ways to pull and rein our budget back in, have maybe an underwrite, and then give the taxpayers a break.
John, I believe, or Joe? I don't know. I don't know who's next. Sorry. Whoever wants to go.
Well, we've been doing, we did just recently, our tax rate went down, but unfortunately, the evaluations went up, you know, and we can't control that. But anything that we can do to make it manageable, and when we're working smarter, bringing revenue in, it doesn't make sense to raise something just because you can. But we're not in that position yet, you know? And I think we all want what's right. We all want to make sure we're there for our veterans, and there for our seniors, because we're going to be seniors there ourselves sooner or later, you know? And again, if we can move in the direction of more development, positive development that doesn't drain services and put excess, you know, on the budget, where the projects we get coming in, and new growth now, doesn't tax the infrastructure, doesn't tax police and fire, doesn't tax schools, that's what we have to focus our attention on. We're doing that. We've got to do more of it. I am on the way right now to finishing up another project. I don't know if they will cede with us, but we've gone through the vetted process.
Okay, John?
Yes. So, right, as I said, right from the very beginning, that's one of the reasons I'm running, is to try to be able to stop this spending every nickel that we bring in, not just in tax revenue, but in fees. You know, our bond rating went up, not just because of, you know, what some management, it had, when you read the actual reason, it had to do because we increased fees to the point that, you know, people can't afford it anymore. I think the current administration and the board is disconnected with the rest of the world here and the residents, because it's not just seniors. Everybody talks about the seniors. The seniors are definitely struggling, especially if they're on only Social Security. But there's a lot of families that live paycheck to paycheck, and they are always left out. So, yes, anytime, if we have an opportunity to bring in enough revenue, saving on the tax, not raising taxes 2.5% is my goal.
Great. Okay, final question. I'm going to start with Joe. Why should we vote for you?
Well, why should you? And why am I asking for your vote? Because unlike the two opponents, for the last three years, I have a proven track record of bringing money into the town. We had a struggling golf course that dates back to the 80s. The residents of Stoughton, the taxpayers of Stoughton, through town meeting, each year, were paying on average of $100,000 to fund that golf course, to make it something that was workable. And for a lot of Stoughton residents who were paying for it, they never played golf. So, then we said we're going to do something different. I met with a local businessman who was looking to do something different. At the time, we had just lost our vendor at the golf course, had to be thrown out, and he didn't pay fees and so forth. It was a mess. And that businessman came in, and at this point now, that budget has had a 400% increase in revenue with $1.4 million in retained earnings. That's because I personally went out, met with a businessman, and said, how about this? Would that be something you're interested in? It went out for anybody else that was interested. It was the only person that did it. They made it happen. So, I'm out there in bringing money in for our town, and it's working. I'm going to continue that. My success rate should be an example of what I can get done. I know it's out there now. It's underway right now, and I'm looking for, in the next term, to have some more, really to celebrate. A couple of these things, if they have you, they're going to be such an asset to our town, and they don't tax the infrastructure.
Thank you. John?
Again, thank you, Roberta, for holding the debate. Very much appreciated, and gives us an opportunity to meet and get our views out there. As I said earlier, I'm the only candidate who's been promoting and advertising my priorities. I had eight of them that I've been regularly promoting online and in the suburban shopper. The eight, as I said, you know, underassessed properties, went unanswered. Just that one property, $318,025 annually, that's, we were subsidizing that. Every other taxpayer was subsidizing this. That is unacceptable. The other part that, you know, we have a housing policy plan that has been in draft mode coming up four years. What is the town, the Select Board been doing with it? This is unacceptable. It needs to be a priority for our town, and so we have a certified plan again. Need to create a task force, deal with the blight in the town. This is long overdue. It's, there's just too many properties that are drawing down and ruining the look of the town. The master plan needs to be updated. And that was something that, you know, when I was on the board, is something that we financed, got the financing for and started the master plan. Improve and restore working relationship between the Select Board and Stoughton Media Access Corporation was my other one. So, my last comment would be is, you know, part of my experience is, I was a pricing analyst for 23 years, with a very large book manufacturer, dealing with contracts with big companies. My experience is, a $600 vendor at a golf course doesn't bring in $1 million. It's all the improvements the town has installed in it. It's the quality of the person that is running it, and that's where the money and the revenue is coming from.
Not true.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I'd like to thank you again, Roberta, for hosting this forum. I think that in the case that I would be elected to the Select Board, what I would like to do is advocate for the taxpayers. I don't think that the taxpayers are first and foremost at the thought of every policy, that decision that is being made, and they need a voice here. For too long, there's been a lack of confidence in the administration at every level in our town. There's been decades of scandals, corruption, different problems. People are tired of that. They're looking for a change. I have no history and no baggage with any of that, so I come with a fresh slate, fresh ideas. I want to see the budget planned for the next generation. I want to change the way things are budgeted so that the taxpayer is first. That's the bottom line. I want to bring my character, which is integratable. I listen to everyone on every side of every issue. I'm fair-minded. I know that the school has been a very contentious debate here in Stoughton. There's people that are emotionally charged up on both sides of it. Whatever comes of this election, whether the town goes for it or votes no again, I think we're going to need someone that's going to advocate for funding it within our budget and not just defaulting to a Prop 2.5 override. And also, if it doesn't pass, and a lot of people are concerned about the modulars and the other things, again, we need an advocate that's going to say, no, let's regroup. Let's build the South School that is affordable. We don't have to give up the idea just because this particular proposal wasn't accepted.
Great. Thanks, guys. I appreciate everybody coming. Thank you for watching. I hope you got a lot of information, and you go out and vote for one of these gentlemen for Select Board on April 8. And you can also vote early. I believe it's starting on Monday, the 31st. So, thanks again, Joe, Bob, and John for coming. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.